When we're done, I have a couple of documents for some of you who haven't been here. A couple meetings or several meetings to sign off on. You were in attendance during the Zoom meeting. Signature.
I might have to leave early.
Not allowed.
You know, Eric said so there come like he never gets uptight. But one time there was a chase across the whole county. Henderson started Henderson, up through Evansville and everything. We all met afterwards. There was some back and forth, and I remember Eric standing up and saying, last time I looked, city was in my county.
That guy sent us a response to you.
All right, on that note, like to call this meeting at the Evansville Vaynerbro County Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Do we have any visitors?
I would like to introduce, Steve was out this week and Erin is on vacation. So we have joining us from Barbara and Bauer Kendall Ziliak today.
Hi, nice to meet you. All right, so no visitors, any correspondence to discuss to bring before the board? If not, then let's move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda for this afternoon?
Motion approved in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion of any individual items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I do want to say something about the director's report. I just want to recognize Kimberly Barber. I appreciate the small things that happened in this director's report. Fact that she helped with Hayden, who was, said that he could agree and had the reaction it did, that's a big deal. So I agree.
Very nice. Any other discussion or comments on the consent agenda? If not, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor accepting the consent agenda, signified by same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that moves forward. Governments, we have an appropriation reduction. Lori, would you like to present that to us? Hope Lori stepped out of her anxiety. Lori, would you like to present the appropriation reduction?
Yes. So we had two encumbrances from 2020 that we carried forward that have, were on purchase orders that have been canceled. The actual purchases have, are not, are no longer needed. And so we'd like to reduce the current 2021 budget by those two encumbrances under appropriation category three, which is software enhancement and technology consultants. And so we need a motion to do that.
Give a motion in a second on the encumbrance reduction. Any discussion or questions on that? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, that moves forward.
If you can please sign that.
And Lori, I think has something for us to sign. And the secretary will sign at the bottom, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, then finance report, Lori?
I'll just briefly touch on the appropriation report for the end of June 2021, since we'll be doing the second quarter update up here shortly. And at the end of June, we had 63% of our overall budget left. You can see the in the encumbrance column, those top two, the 4470 and 10557 are the two reductions that you're signing off on now, which you just approved. So those will come off and it won't reduce our budget by a whole lot, but that will help a little bit. And then as we continue to make some of our bigger ticket purchases through the year, that will continue to bring down the balance of our budget.
And investments?
So in our four investment funds, we have a total of $15,842,000. And that does include the tax settlement for June that came in. And again, I'll touch base a little bit on the amounts that we received for our June tax settlement. And that came in, I believe it was the 23rd or the 25th of June. And the average daily yield for June was .0605%, which is down 13 hundreds of a percentage point. And .0671 for our year to date, average daily yield, which is down .15 hundreds of a percent.
All right, then moving on to the approval of bills.
Yes, I'm going for approval of invoice dated 6/9/21 through 7/8. 21 for $1,779,544.51. And payroll dated June 4th of 21 for $231,224.96. And June 18th, 21,367,102.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second to accept the approval of bills. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question related to the check register. Lori, we've got on.
What's the date of the bottom?
6/23, it's page 48.
Okay.
And there's a check register 32, 682, John Kern. There appear to be two, two checks. What was that, were they same thing or were they first, first Friday?
Two different Friday events.
Even though it's 6/4.
That was the date of the invoice.
Okay.
They, they submitted two, two weekly appearances, performances on the same invoice.
Right, and the same thing with Kimberly Barber, that's just the rent? Same thing, it's a first Friday performance?
Yes.
They submitted, they just, said question on that. Are we, are we doing that directly or is that through the foundation? Or we paid performance for the first Friday?
They're taking it out of our programming. We have a variety of different areas we cover programming for, and one of those is for performance arts. And so partnering with Haynes Corner, we're doing, helping with the first Friday with the performances.
We're not being reimbursed, we're just, we're actually financing that, the performance.
Correct.
And then, I did not see, there was a credit card?
Yes.
I didn't see that. That was Walmart, I thought it.
No, that's Walmart. I thought it was in there. You know, it wasn't because of the timing of the payment. No, I take that back. It was the $5,331.75 on the 30th.
I didn't see the detail on the credit card.
You're right, it's not. That one got missed. I can send it to you.
Please.
Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor of approving the bills for this month, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. I think that motion goes forward. Lori, the second quarter budget update?
So in your packet, you'll see what looks similar to the appropriations report, only includes the revenue for the first two quarters or the first half of the year. And if you follow across the upper portion of that under revenue, you can see the property taxes that we received were $4,904,000. If we were looking at it as a percentage of our certified budget, we had, we collected 46% for the first half of the year. If you look at it with the circuit breaker tax cap credits reduced, you're looking at over 50% of that that was actually collected within the year. But we really don't see the effect of the tax cap reductions until the December, when everything is settled at the end of the year and the assessed value is, is set for November, I believe it is. And then the same with the other taxes. Those were received along with the property taxes. We received 52% of our financial institute tax, 54% of the excise, 51 of the commercial vehicle excise tax. And then you see where we're at in response, in relation to the certified budget that we received from the DLGF for year to date. And under the anticipated revenue column, other than those for, that we budgeted for, the other amounts are as, will increase as we collect those amounts. We are low on our fines, fees and other manual charges, mainly because we don't have fines anymore. But we are collecting fees from overdue. And I know Heather's working really closely with lead management and making sure that all of our accounts that are submitted to them as overdue and collectible, that those are incorrect amounts, because sometimes they'll, they'll have return materials or they'll pay for some materials and that's not showing up correctly in the system. So we want to make sure that's all correct. But we are getting payments as, or being billed for those.
But what materials are those?
Books, DVDs, anything that you checked out.
I thought we stopped collecting overdos or pastives.
For items not brought back to the library.
Overdue, yes, but if they're not brought back at all, they're, they're called replacement fees.
Okay.
Yep. And then under expenditures, it's just a little more detailed breakdown of the appropriation report, so you can see it by line item. There's really no particular area that's, we're really over budget other than our e-audiobooks and our other e-audio, no, other e-resources categories, which is mainly our streaming. And that's just because they're so popular and continue to have a lot of circulation in those areas. So we will have some funding that will need to transfer later on. Some of that may just be from the ebook category into the e-audio and other e-resources. Some of it may be from non-print, which was traditionally your DVDs, your CDs, and now they're being streamed. So we'll have that area. And then the other areas that might look low are actually, they're not on a 1/12 recurring basis throughout the year, like our library dues, a lot of them are due at the beginning of the year. And then we have a few triple ones towards the end of the year. And the same with our facility maintenance agreements. Those are mainly due at the very beginning of the year.
Lori, I have just a question as you're looking ahead to preparing the budget for next year in light of COVID and in light maybe of, are clients or customers maybe changing habits? Do you anticipate maybe looking differently at collections and budgeting differently as far as e-resources as opposed to, you know, text resources or hard copy resources?
Yes. We have, what we typically do is take the trend over a last five year basis. But we'll also really be looking at the fact that our statistics are showing digital's still very high circulation where our print materials might not be. They're picking back up, but just not as quickly. And so we are looking at that and have worked with our collections manager, Lisa Holstein, and she's made some recommendations on where to move those money so it better fits what we're currently circulating.
Yeah, the, the big trend in the library world right now with collections that's being talked about is your physical audiobooks, your books on CD, aren't being published as much because of streaming and the fact that they're being touched with COVID. And DVDs, because of the movie industry, there's a big lag on production of new DVDs coming out. And they've changed how they're platforming that. Most of them are going straight to streaming services or to the theater unlimited basis, but they're really throwing a lot to streaming services. You know Paramount movies are going straight to Paramount Plus and things like that. So a lot of the new movies that are coming out are going straight to streaming. And not necessarily all of them are coming out on Blu-ray or DVD or 4K, but we're, we're watching all that.
Do you imagine anything like, you know how you have, Kupla has the audiobooks and the ebooks? Do you imagine that at some point the videos will somehow end up there?
They have movies and music on their book.
Yep.
And comic books. And comic books.
And if you like TV and like foreign shows or documentaries, Canopy is another streaming service we have. That's very good. Get me an album, keep them on the stream. Really good for documentary.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for other business, the downtown public art projects.
Yes, I was contacted by the Arts Council, CMO and the Downtown Evansville EID, who are working on a downtown art project funded by the Rotary Club of Evansville to install a dinosaur themed art trail linking Mickey's Kingdom and the Children's Museum. And the trail would encourage families to explore downtown Evansville, highlight family friendly eateries, activities and merchants, and promote healthy exercise. And one of the proposed locations they would like to put an installation is here at the Central Library to put dinosaurs in trees. I'll pass this down. Metal sculptures outside the children's area. And they were just hoping that the board would support this. For permission for the installation as part of the trail.
Parsley think is a great idea. And just as a little input, I know it said something about books. It'd be nice if this tree could mirror the tree that's in the main. You know, we've got the inverted tree, it's a book tree, if that was a book tree, it'd be pretty cool.
Yeah.
I don't know what Zach will think about it.
I'm assuming we need a motion on this to approve. Okay, in a second.
Second.
So any other discussion about this project?
I'm looking at this, trying to determine how big.
Proportion wise.
Yeah, what that proportion is. And then, you know, I assume this is going to be designed to be permanent in nature. So it'd be set in concrete or, you know, just worried about ongoing maintenance of it. Since it's going to be set on our property.
Right. There, there will be some of that. And obviously there'll be some form of MOU that will probably come back on the maintenance of that and whether we're doing it, they're doing it, but we have rights to do our maintenance and all that. But yeah, I think right now they just want the approval that we're fine with it being placed on the library property as part of this project.
Can we rephrase that, saying that we're very supportive of the concept, but absent some finer details? We just, I don't want to commit to putting a great big giant statue out there and not knowing what, what, you know, I mean, I guess it's going to look like that. I just don't know if it's this big or, you know, I just, I'm hesitant to say absolutely yes. But I think I would want to send the message that we're absolutely supportive of the concept.
Okay.
I agree. And my, my concern would be just the upkeep and the cost. Like is it bronze, that you don't have to do any maintenance to it or you have to shine it up? Do you have to replace it? Whatever, if a tornado comes and knocks it down, so we have to replace it? And do we have budget and that kind of stuff? So it's all finances.
My questions were very similar. One of my questions was just around the lawn maintenance around just being considerate at that because I know we have outside services for mowing and such types of those kinds of projects. Depending on if it's in a concrete slab or if you really have to help close those kinds of things. And then also just if there would be any liability issues, climbing on it.
Yeah. Potentially, but we do have insurance for that.
And I don't know that those were big anymore, they'd flag it on the trash can, that's right.
That's exactly true.
Our liability insurance would cover that.
Yeah.
So do, could we frame that motion maybe a little? It sounds as if we maybe want to reframe that motion.
So who was, who made the motion?
Who made the motion? How about I just withdraw my motion, you all make the motion you want?
You can amend the motion.
They know what they want. I'm firing on it if it has issue. So if they want something else, they can make the motion they want.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion, so we can do what they want. And I'm going to vote against whatever his motion is.
Love you too. Trying to think, thinking out loud. I moved that we endorse the concept and we express our desire to participate. However, we need to have some additional details, including maintenance, size, scope, some of those things to, to say yea or nay.
Could we approve moving forward with the design and not the construction or installation?
There's probably more eloquence than a way of saying that.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to chuck my vote forward.
He's having a vote for my motion.
I, I'll support, I, I think you guys are in the weeds is what I think, but I'll support you. You want to go in the weeds, I'll go there with you.
Richard, you actually have the motion, so do we?
Richard?
No.
Chucked it. So he's withdrawing, why don't you say what you just said?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the design and that we await the design before we approve the construction or installation.
Do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right, so we are moving forward with the design phase. And staff spotlight.
Do you have a spotlight here?
No, we have no spotlight.
Oh, no spotlight today, all right.
No spotlight today, but we have a big spotlight next one.
Yes. Any other business to come up with?
Yes, I did want to, I, we mentioned in the email notification, meeting notification that due to the rescinding of the executive order, governor's executive order, that we would now have to start meeting in person. There are, there is a caveat to that under the House Enrollment Act 1437. Unfortunately, the way it's written out, we still would have to be in person to have a quorum, because you have to have 50% in person to even be able, eligible to host a virtual participant. Our current bylaws say that you have to be in attendance to have any vote on any matter, but you can still participate electronically or by other means. What we'd like to do is, and I've been talking to Kendall and Steve Barber about this, changing our bylaws so that it's reflective of the new law and, and putting some of these caveats into ours, into our bylaws, so it's reflective of this. And then we address that at a later time if we need to have any type of virtual meeting or virtual participation, as you say. And with that, it also is a reminder that it's been three years since we've had an overview of our bylaws. And so if you would like to appoint a bylaws committee, Belinda, this could be part of what the bylaws committee works on with Steve and probably Kendall.
Before I would make that appointment, do we have anyone who is just passionate about bylaws? Somebody I'd like to serve on that?
I'm in a class and a committee.
I think we're in the attic right now.
I would be willing to, but I'm shellbound on one.
We have, we have three individuals.
I don't have any, but let me, go ahead and vote for it.
I don't know that we.
No.
I just want to, I just make comment. Were you here two years, last time we did this, right?
I, yes, but I was not.
The last time we did this, they came in and there was like a power grab going on. That we, it was like taking power from the board and putting it all in the executive director's hand about different things. And because of my nice nature.
Eric didn't even.
It went back, they backed off of that. And all I would say is let's make whatever modifications we have to be in. But I don't want to be watching some paragraph, because that's, that was a blatant paragraph, a proposal three years ago that was totally unnecessary, it was to take power away from this board.
One other question here, Lori, that line. I know there's a foundation, we kind of, there was some discussion on their bylaws at the same time, because there was something about, you know, the appointees to theirs. Do we need to do that in concert with that or not?
No. And theirs have been recently updated.
And Rick's are current, your current appointee to the foundation. And they updated theirs 2019.
On the virtual meetings, if the governor does issue another emergency order, then we can go back. It would, it would supersede this. This is for a non-emergency situation.
Correct.
Just where, say, I happen to be on vacation and it's a board meeting, I could participate virtually according to whatever parameters we come up with on bylaws, right?
Potentially.
They're pretty restrictive actually, because like I said, you have to have 50% here in, in person and attendance anyway. So that already helps us meet our quorum. So you wouldn't be helping meet a quorum by attending virtually. You cannot participate, even if you are allowed to attend virtually, you cannot participate in adoption of a. But you can't, according to the new law, you can't participate in adoption of the budget, make a reduction in personnel, initiate a referendum, establish or increase a fee, establish or increase a penalty, use eminent domain authority or establish, raise or renew a tax.
But there would be other, there would be a majority of this agenda tonight that I would have been able to vote on.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm just saying, there, there are some restrictions to what you can and what you can't do.
I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of imagination, but I would hope when we redo our bylaws that we write in such a fashion that we can be as compliant with the law as, as at the moment in time to make every effort to make participation in these meetings as easy and as seamless as possible. You know, whatever it takes, that if the law changes, we change with it, that says you can participate. And I just think that's where we're headed as a, as a, as an entity, as in general. And I just wouldn't want to put anything in writing in a bylaw that keeps us from doing something that the law eventually allows us to do.
And I definitely agree with Eric. And I think that, I understand the idea of quorum, but I also understand the, the power of having a majority of your board or all of your board participating in as many of the meetings as possible. I understand quorum's the baseline, but beyond that, I'd like for everybody to agree as much as possible.
And what our intent in putting this in bylaws instead of just having a separate policy is that in your bylaws, then you can reference the law, that state law that's in place. And then as it changes, your bylaws don't have to change.
Correct.
Kendall, is there a way with your question from, to give us just kind of a quick bullet of the particular statutes that affect.
All right, issue, yeah. Lori actually shared with Steve and I a legal memo. I'm not sure how you came about that, but that's, that pretty much summarizes exactly how it would apply you.
It's from the State Library.
Yep.
And, but yeah, we have been doing our own research and pulled the statutes to follow that language as well. So we would work with the bylaws committee to get something in writing if that's where you guys want to go with it.
I can send this to the bylaws.
Please.
All right, so the committee that's going to be working on that. Lori, do you want to take responsibility for kind of organizing that group to meet?
Sure.
Not really, but, no, I will. Thank you. All right, any other business to come up with?
I just had a couple of announcements. Summer reading is going very, very well. We're just barely short of our $500,000, our 500,000 minute reading goal. And we're over it as of right now?
We're over it now, we're at the last week.
Okay. If we included the staff. But yeah, but yes, we are over that. But everyone's from programming outreach to all the locations. Everyone participating is having a great time. We've had some outdoor programs that have gone very well for in-person program. Dance parties have gone very well. Outreach staff did a fantastic job at Library Day at Westman Woods. And Westman Woods was very, very happy with the efforts of Zach, Katie, the rest of the outreach crew that was out there that day working on things. And they said they had mid-week program, had weekend participation for them. Large weekend participation. They said it's one of their busiest days and they really appreciated the partnership. EVPL East is almost complete with their work. Basically, we're down to our own facility staff doing the painting of the public areas. And they may have even finished today. So, but all the flooring's in and all of that has been taken care of. And we're just waiting for the plaster, the replastering of the interior walls and some of the back room storage places to complete. the replastering of the interior walls and some of the back room storage places to completely dry and get a good reading, um, to make sure the work is all warranted, to make sure the moisture's totally out, so. Which is really hard to do in the summertime in Evansville, the humidity. Uh, especially when we've had workmen coming in through the back door constantly, so. And painting with the humidity in here. So, but it's looking really, really nice and, uh, um, very, very good. And, um, the HR team and, um, various managers across the system and staff have been very busy, um, hiring new staff. Um, some of the new initiatives are teen adult librarians have all been offered. We've had both great internal and external candidates, so there's been promotions with me now, we're back filling some other positions and stuff, so it's very, very exciting and, um, they've been working really hard to get all that, um, done, so. Um, be some exciting things coming up here in the near future with us being open to the public fully again, being able to do programming and having, um, dedicated staff to, um, enhance those programs and initiatives.
Thank you, Scott.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else to come before the board? If not, adjourn this meeting of our library board of trustees. Thank you all very much.